So you guys are good?
Yep.
Till you walk out the, till you walk out the door.
We'll slam the door.
Alright, good to meet you all, see ya.
Thank you.
He was a, he was a reserve. All their IT work.
Oh really?
And he was a reserve for quite a while. But.
Ezra blocked us out.
Oh, you put something over top of it?
Yeah.
Oh no.
I wonder why it wasn't coming up on the computer?
Oh, the lens cap was on.
That would be it.
They would've heard us, but they wouldn't have seen us.
Yeah.
They would've heard us, but yeah, exactly.
Well, the rule says if a equipment fails you, go ahead and meet.
You know what it says?
Yeah. Thank you Kobe, I couldn't reach it.
It's crooked.
It's crooked just a little Kobe.
Crooked.
Yeah.
The right side needs to go up just a hair.
Now down a little, now up a little, that's what I do Danny.
Better?
It's better, yeah. Are those locked in on something? Are they just hanging?
Just hanging. Yeah.
Cause I thought they-
I thought they were on those museum logs.
They, well, they used to be.
Yeah.
So I bet when they painted, they never-
They probably took it down.
Use this over here, so then I can keep everything plugged in.
Yeah, and you didn't have a brought the little table over yet?
Ah, no, I don't think we got one yet.
I thought you said you had one.
Well, can't have one over my dad's car, isn't it? Well, I could see how much if she'd get it.
It's five oh two, for sure we said five o'clock.
No Chip's not on yet either, see.
I couldn't remember if it was five or five fifteen, so I-
Who knows, it could, who knows with me, I mean, I'm sorry guys, but I'm just like-
I think, I think you actually gave Ben fifteen minutes.
Did I?
I think, but I kept-
He's off at five, so he said he might be late.
Yeah, I kept looking through my notes and I thought, man, I don't know.
Yeah. Chip just said I'm traveling, but on the call. So he must've called in and-
Yeah. How come they-
Hi Alan.
Hey.
Hey guys.
Hey.
Hi.
Sorry, I'm late, I, uh, my other meeting ran long, uh, because then, and I had to get off as quickly as possible.
That's okay, we're still waiting on Ben, Ben's on his way, but I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
He doesn't close till five, so.
I got you. You don't hear me okay?
Can it right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, can you hear us okay?
Chip, are you there?
Sorry. Can you hear me?
There's me.
Yes.
Yes.
Got it, thanks.
Kobe, I'm like you over there.
I think, I think Ben might be getting ready to pull up here.
Little different, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
I can see the clock from here, that's really nice.
Yeah, that's good.
I'll be.
That could be a bad thing though.
Yeah. Tina will have to tell you what time it is for German.
Nope, that's not him, is it?
Need a pen?
We can go on ahead and get started, I don't need-
Oh.
Yeah.
We'll just have to catch him up when he gets here.
Well, there was a breeze this afternoon, but man, it was still humid, wasn't it?
Somebody posted on Facebook, a funnel cloud touchdown in Cruthersville.
Really?
I heard Seymour too.
Really?
Yeah.
This afternoon.
Wow.
Is this meeting need to be reported?
It is.
It is being.
Okay, thanks.
We're following the law.
I'm sure you are. You've got, you've got me asking now.
Yeah. It's always good to double check.
Do we need to call it order or anything?
Yeah, I was waiting to see what, uh, we're just trying to get Ben, you know, I don't want him to miss too much, so it's five after.
Add go. Add go, yeah.
I'm gonna go on ahead and call the meeting to order. So Matt, you have the floor.
Okay, uh, well, um, so I guess Debbie and, um, both council members, so I presented a, uh, a scope services for phase one and a phase two part of the project. And, um, I didn't, um, so that, that encompassed all services that we talked about. Um, so to, tonight, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but did you need, I just really wanted to make sure you guys understood the scope of services. Uh, what sort of questions, what sort of things that you need me to clarify more, what are things that weren't included? And just to remind you, we, we did not include the additional work for, uh, improvements to the state road. Because, um, we, uh, Debbie were going to investigate that further, we've heard two different answers on that one. That the state would, NDOT specifically would do all the construction documentation for that. Uh, but then, when we talked to them for clarification, they said, no, they're not gonna do that, so I think we're still waiting on that. So this scope of services did leave that out, uh, just for everyone's, uh, understanding. But it included holistically, top to bottom, soup to nuts, all services. For, um, all the roadway improvements between the new subdivision that crats all the way through the, uh, Madison Avenue. Um, the, uh, improvements for sidewalk installations along State Road and down Madison Avenue to the tennis fields. Uh, so that would include, uh, community engagement as an information session. Um, and then it also included preliminary design, uh, through schematic design, um, and all the way through construction administration. And over to you, the, the town, uh, from the general contractor. So it included all bidding and, and everything is part of that. Uh, phase two does not, uh, phase two part of the scope, uh, included more of a planning session so that we know where we left off from phase one. And what part of the historic downtown elements, uh, would be appropriate for phase two and beyond. So that really looked at, uh, much heavier pedestrian, uh, public engagement sessions, understanding, uh, one, where those, uh, improvements should go. What are the most appropriate? Uh, and then all the way through, uh, what aesthetic that should look like. And how do you connect all these things together so that you as a town look very complete, very holistic, uh, very, um, you know, uh, similar aesthetic throughout the entire town. So that phase two, uh, was separated at cost at the bottom. Um, and involved a couple of different community engagements, but involved you all the way through that, that process. Um, and so, from a project schedule standpoint, we looked at, uh, phase one, uh, if there's, uh, phase one lasted approximately five, seven weeks for conceptual design. Another sixteen, eighteen weeks for construction documentation and bidding. And six to nine months depending on the final implementation and what's being implemented. Six to nine months for construction, uh, through, uh, handing it over. And then phase two would, uh, ideally take place at the same time. Uh, and that would include, uh, sixteen, between sixteen and twenty weeks, uh, for that. I will mention that this, uh, also did include survey as part of this process. So all your surveys included in the price. Uh, we did have a pretty stout survey because it's a, a long stretch of roadway. And included a lot of different parcels as, uh, as part of this first initial phase. So we need exact survey of where all the, uh, property lines would be, so that we understand where the roadway is, all those things. Along with all the utilities, so this price included all of that. Along with, uh, at an hourly rate, um, and this is all outlined in the cost of services. Um, that it included the weekly group at, and this would be billed hourly, uh, for funding opportunities. So ideally, we would be working with you as part of phase one to find what are the funding opportunities available for matching grants? And, uh, land water conservation grants, or things like that that can be implemented and provide additional funding for this project. Uh, so that was included as part of that, but we build hourly as a separate phase altogether. Uh, I'm very familiar with weekly group, they are wonderful to work with in Indiana, uh, they're consultants a lot. Uh, as we talked through this, uh, we believe that it would be a move you and, you know, save as much money as possible to do that hourly. Instead of just one month's sum based on what's available, uh, from a funding standpoint. For instance, uh, if there is no, uh, there's only a couple of things available, uh, we don't wanna spend all your money and not really, you know, come out with much. And so we wanna build that hourly, so it takes advantage of their time wise. Um, and in the phase two, uh, I'll put that into two different tasks. Uh, the streetscape improvement location, and then the streetscape design guidelines basing a budget. So that gives you an idea of all of, uh, what's in, uh, the areas that you're gonna improve. And then a phasing plan with design guidelines, and then a budget for each of those. So that, that, we, we know that you should have additional money left over from phase one. Or that it would be, um, appropriate to allocate toward the, the phase two portion of the project. Which is why I think it's important that it would be, um, aligned at the very same time as phase one. So that, as phase one ends, you can jump right into another phase of the streetscape and continue on. Because, and, uh, I believe Chip, you said it has, the funds have to be used by the end of five years. So, don't wanna really delay this and start a brand new thing after, um, phase one and start all over this whole process. It could align and continue on as, uh, as we find out where new sections of roadway can be improved. So that's, that's the full scope of services. Um, you know, I, I just, I went through that very briefly, obviously, there was a lot to it. Um, there was additional services and assumptions that are all included as part of that. Along with exclusions, which are mainly too, uh, technical, any, uh, any of that road improvements for, uh, the state highway that was not. Uh, we got today actually what the requirements were gonna be for the state highway improvements. So, if we need to add that, we can certainly do that. Um, so Debbie afforded that to you if you will add that.
Yeah, uh, we had met with NDOT, Triva and I did, and, um, yeah, they, they changed their whole tune to us. You know, cause we said, well, you kind of said this, and they kind of talked around it.
They, well, they said, oh, you misunderstood.
Yeah.
Well, we did misunderstand, there were three of us there.
Yeah, and Triva asked them twice, you know, to make sure that we were right. But, uh, but yeah, they did change, so, um, I, I mean, and then Triva found out yesterday that Taco Bell is coming. They purchased the land this week. She had to send a letter to them to, um, show-
For their zoning.
For their zoning and stuff, cause they, it's zoned properly, so they're gonna break ground pretty quick, is my understanding.
Okay. Alright, so do you need me to add on additional services for the state highway improvements?
Well, I think first we need to know Chip, if, if, if the Lily money-
If it's even feasible.
Yeah, is any, an option.
Right. Yeah, um, well, a couple of things, one, the, the phase two, I've been looking at it, phase two, the way it's written up, Matt, looks more like a, uh, kind of a roadmap for the future. Uh, it's something that's really important in college and to Lily too, is that we're not too far into the future on the improvements in that historic district. It just, it's obvious to everybody, but it's probably worth saying. I mean, every prospective student, every prospective parent that we have driving through that area, that's really, really important to us. It's really important to the county. So getting things done in the historic district is something that we need to see happen in the, in, well, we've got about four years left. In the next four years, not down the road. So we're gonna have to do a really good job, I think, of balancing what is phase one gonna cost? And what do we have, I hate to say leftovers for phase two, because it's the primary driver, the way the grant reads today. And we're kinda making it sound like it's, it's an afterthought. Uh, those are my words, you, you didn't make it sound like an afterthought, but, uh, but it is clearly a future thing, the way it's written up right now.
And that's not in, intent for myself, that's why I was thinking that just happens at the very same time. So that we can, uh, get this done within the four years. But I, I don't know, and I don't think the town really knows where to implement those new road improvements. And so, uh, we have to understand if, uh, area along with a budget, so that we're not emphasizing your budget for, uh, these road improvements.
Yeah, and clearly phase one is, yeah, I suspect that you went around town and asked everybody, that's gonna be a priority. I mean, certainly a priority for the council, and I, I, I understand that and support that.
Yep, and that, that was my, uh, that was my direction for this.
Okay, yeah.
But, but Chip, as, as you and I talked last night, should you even broach this subject with Lily? Are we just spinning our wheels, are they gonna say, no, we're not gonna do this?
Yeah, well, I don't think, I don't think they would just say, no, go away, I don't, I don't think that at all. I think what we need to do is to go, like we would anybody that you, you make a request to change of, I think we need to go to them with, um, the story. And with as much information and as much data as we can, they love data. I think we wanna be able to say, we kinda sorta think it's gonna cost about this much, something we had planned on.
Yeah.
We think we can go get some grants elsewhere that might cover, you know, approximately, I just, I think we need to give them, just a real general outline to give them a heads up. And then they will probably say to us, hey, that sounds good, what a, what an interesting turn you've had, you've had here. Uh, go forward and keep us posted, that's what I hope we can get.
Well, I've worked with Lily for forty years, and they don't hesitate to say no, if they don't like it. So, I don't want us to spin our wheels and waste their time.
No, no, no.
If it's not even a possibility.
Yeah, I haven't said anything to them, uh, because it is, we needed a little, we needed to unfold a little bit more. Uh, I would really love to be able to go to them, those just general ideas of what the cost is. I mean, is it, is it, you know, phase one is, uh, well, we're gonna do phase, we're gonna do the sidewalks of phase one anyway. The, the new thing is the traffic signal.
Right.
And the, uh, crosswalk. And then, oh my, oh by the way, the, the street needs to be wide, and oh by the way, utilities.
Mm-hmm.
So what's that additional cost of up beyond sidewalks that we probably would've done anyway? Uh, that, that, Matt, that's where I'm needing some guidance, and I know who the asking this. I think I'm gonna need something to, I just need to go to that with some idea.
But, I, I was, uh, so an idea of cost, Chip?
Yeah, idea, yes, just a general idea of, hey, we were gonna do sidewalks anyway from the tennis courts up to three dump subdivision. Uh, and then how we have these additional opportunities. They're probably gonna cost another, I think, over a billion and a half dollars, and we're gonna go try to find funding for another half a million. And, so we'll have to take a million out of the fund, out of the Lily grant, for instance, uh, that we hadn't anticipated. But we think it's the right thing to do, and we support it, or we wouldn't be asking you.
Okay. Uh, it's, it's very difficult to give shit at, because nothing's been designed.
Right.
Uh, like, you know, like, I, the worst thing I can do is, I can shoot from the hip, and then, um, and then it's completely wrong, and then, now you, now you gotta kinda point the finger back at me, and, uh, I, I don't really want that to happen. And I want it to be a very transparent process for everybody. Uh, I, I, I can say that, you know, sidewalks are typically depending on difficult, like, grading, grad inches, just between, and how wide they are. But, you know, between thirty-five and, uh, sixty-five dollars, you know, a linear foot. Right, that, that doesn't include a whole lot of things that are in as part of this project, you know, because-
Yeah.
A lot of drainage, there's fence lines to move, there's trees, utilities, so like, that's just a little-
If we do that anyway, I, I think that's, I'm not so concerned about the sidewalks, because I think the town would've said, hey, we want these sidewalks to, uh, prevent subdivision from McDonald's, because the council obligated to do that with the developer. And then, I, I, I'm assuming the town would ultimately say, hey, yes, let's try to get a sidewalk along fifty-six from McDonald's down to Madison. I think we do that anyway, so I'm not so concerned about that, it's, it's stuff above and beyond that. Uh, and, and I know-
Above the, is the traffic signal stuff?
Yes, it's the traffic signal, it's the widening of a road, it's, it's moving utility poles, I mean, there's a, there's just a ton of expense to be had. I mean, when, when I first heard that it could be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm like, gosh, that's a lot of money, that's enough, and that's a drop in the bucket on this, I doubt.
Um, yeah, but, I think I mentioned that half a million, two hundred and seventy, just knowing how long it is. But I, I can ask NDOT if they have any clue.
Just, just something only so I can say to Lily, hey, I mean, do, do I tell Lily, it's gonna be every bit of the four million that we have? Or do I tell Lily, eh, it's gonna probably be closer to half, or a quarter, I don't know, I'm not trying to nail any figures down, but, I, I need to be able to get them something to think about, some kind of scope.
Right, and, and what does it get thrown into this is, I, you know, if you talk all internally here, is, um, the, the new, um, market? And, obviously with McDonald's, and, uh, uh, the new, um, Taco Bell might be throwing in funds for these improvements. So I don't, you know, how much of that would they help?
Well, right, and, and, uh, so I think we kinda act like that's not gonna happen, that's just gravy, if we can get that. And if we can get grant funding, uh, through the weekly group, I think that's gravy. I think we just look at the big numbers, um, knowing, knowing that whatever number we come up with is wrong. I know it'll be wrong, either it'll be too high or too low. Um, but I do wanna, you know, I could just notify, hey, we're, we're looking at this, are you all okay with this? And, but, if, I suspect they're gonna come back to me and say, oh, that's interesting, what might that look like? Now, I probably need to be prepared with that. And, and they'll know, it's early, it's too early to, to nail that in, you know, first. But I mean, this, a, a project like this normally costs four million, or two million.
Right, and that's, that's where I'd like to see it in doc, is that they understand it's more than I do, right, this, I'll get-
Yeah, for, for, for sure, I mean, Triva, is that, do you think, does that sound like the right way to go, the way you normally would go?
Yeah. Yeah.
If you dealt with well, over the years.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, I mean, I think that's a reasonable way to go, it, it's not, I think we can pull out of our heads in the next three or four days, unfortunately.
I just hate to see us spinning our wheels, spinning our wheels if they're not even gonna consider it.
I, I, I don't think that'll be the issue, I think they'll absolutely consider it. I think, and, in fact, I think, I think as long as we make a good case, they'll say, sure. I think the big question is, do we have enough money to do it?
And, and remember too, they've gotta follow their grant guidelines, like the connectivity, all that stuff. Or they used to always tell us that, we have to follow those guidelines too.
Right.
So we'll have to figure out-
Connectivity, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this, this is, this is within the spirit of the, of the grant, I mean, it's, it's just a hecatic defensive sidewalk.
Damn, it is, yeah, I agree.
It comes with a traffic light.
I agree. I agree, it's such a necessary part of it.
And that, that's the way I like to approach it, I think.
Do it.
And I think that this is the best shot, that is gonna say, hey, that's interesting, let's, let's pursue that.
Right.
Yeah, it's just such a key part of it, because installing sidewalks into like, a state highway where the traffic never stops, just doesn't make a lot of sense.
But that's what our master plans is.
Right.
And our master plan didn't include a stoplight. It included get me to McDonald's, but you might get killed getting there.
I do have one more question.
I think, I think this is, uh, this, this is a, this is a good thing. In fact, it's funny, I was having a coffee with Tony Steinhardt last week, and I was updating Tony on a handful of things. He's on our steering, maybe for Jefferson together. And then Tony said, hey, don't make that sidewalk narrow along fifty-six, he said, you know, well, you may wanna make that like a wide asphalt path. Um, you know, maybe an eight or ten foot path, so, because when that cross country-
So bikes and-
It's a lot of people, and I thought, well, that was an interesting idea, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we've been thinking in house along that area, like, you have some full off areas for standing and sitting and things like that. That could be incorporated at a lower expense, you know, that all kind of plays into the connectivity to the co, to, yeah, to the college. So, we, we've been thinking along those lines, uh, we've set a, I think we'll get that in.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, it's, it's early, it's just so early, but we, we got to begin to get in touch with Lily. And, you know, as much information as I can give them, even if it's really general, I think, I, I think we're most likely to get that kind of outcome that we're looking for.
Yeah, paved path, might look better down there than a sidewalk.
Yeah, would blend in, matter.
Yeah.
Uh, our cross-country team runs the highway.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah, more accessible too.
Yeah, I, I, it's a good idea, too, I looked at Tony, and I said, I hadn't thought about that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because, you know, ultimately, if we ever get the trail built between scenic drive and Clifton Falls.
Right.
It's gonna be eight or ten feet wide.
Sure.
And so, it, it's really kind of an extension of that.
Yeah.
Well, and just for your knowledge, I, all sidewalks that I would be planning for the town would be a minimum of five to six people. And right now, you're much less in that standard for, for cities, on a five to six, so that allows for somebody in a wheelchair, somebody who is walking to pass by each other. That's, that's just, uh, a standard among most, um, civic, you know, areas. Um, so that, that makes it sort of raining or, you know, wet out, they don't have the ability to, the grass or a ditch line to, to pass one another, right? So that, that would be my goal for minimal requirements. Uh, they, they, like you said, for other areas, there's probably the opportunity to go wider, like you said, a multi-use path or something like that. Um, so that it, it feels a little bit more comfortable beyond that.
Right.
I know that sidewalk for subdivisions, but they know where it's at.
No, it's narrow.
Yeah, but they're, they follow the specs Scott gave them.
Yeah, it looked narrow, I looked at it the other day, the grass growing over it, I mean, it was-
I thought it was me because of the curve that it did, but I saw a lady pushing a baby buggy in, there wasn't any room to get around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Having a wide path, we will have to decide about golf carts.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, what vehicles can be on it?
Yeah.
Even the college maintenance vehicles, I could see them going on there.
Oh, sure, sure.
Like up at Frank, Franklin, you look at them paths.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, them are nice.
I do wanna mention while I'm thinking about it, on phase two down at historic district, I was on a call with Ball State, uh, yesterday, maybe yesterday, Monday. And to talk to them about working, a, a group of Ball State students working on the community garden. They, they have already been to town, and they would like to do a study of downtown Hanover. Um, if, if we would pay their expenses, not, not for repeat, but if we pay their travel expenses, they'd like to bring a class down this fall. And, and maybe identify some properties downtown. And this would tie in with your streetscape and your sidewalks and ad for downtown. But they would like to identify, something identifies some buildings that might be prime for redevelopment someday. Um, and, so that we have a plan in the future that we can look at and say, uh, hey, this is something to shoot for, if we ever find a developer who can do it. I thought it was very interesting, it was a generous offer, and it's a fellow who I, Michael Buick, apparently he's worked a lot of downtowns throughout the state.
Ball State did Hanover's first comprehensive pa, plan, the towns, years ago.
Oh, oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. I can send you a copy.
This fellow did Westfield too, in one of the neighborhoods, um, in, in the state, of course, it's up by Carmel, I mean, that's a different-
Right.
A different setting, but anyway, I mean, it's, it's a really nice area.
Right.
But I told, I said, yeah, I'll, I'll mention that to the town council, just to let them know that you won't interest in coming, and I think, if they're gonna send us a proposal, it will be expensive, or like, I'll let you all know. Um, and then could we, do you think there's any reason we couldn't use some local contractors on this work? Uh, Matt, or, or is that gonna be decided by NDOT? Do they have any state, state certified or something?
So, um, or, there are two things, uh, uh, it's, since it's not an NDOT project, um, they have to be able to do NDOT standards. But since it's not a NDOT project, you can select any contractor, as long as they know how to construct for state standards. Two, this is about, I believe, you, you need to have this as an open bid with lowest bid wins, as long as it's complete.
Right.
Per, per Indiana statute. So we can't really select who's gonna be able to do it other than-
Okay.
Um, it, it just needs to be selected by the lowest and most complete bid.
And that's how the town has to do it.
Even if it does not pay in fours, it's the lowest bidder.
Yeah, that's for any senior town within the state of Indiana.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we, we will certainly, what we're, I plan on doing as part of this process, is re- So, we, we will certainly, what we're, I plan on doing as part of this process, is reaching out to the, uh, local ones, because they will be ideally lower, because they're closer. Um, two, the ones that I like to work with for these types of projects, tell them about it, and make sure they're bidding on it, so that, that does the most opportunity, so like, a Matt Construction, or a Christianity, those type of firms would be ideal for this project, because they do really good work, and they know how to do, working within state right away and, um, uh, city roadways.
Yeah, yeah, well, the, um, the only other question I have is generally was, yeah, I'm gonna ask you, look at your crystal ball, Matt, if you, what might we be missing here? Like, one of the extras was geotechnical, I mean, is that a place that we could get a, a big bill? Or, or do you think that's, it, it's just an extra, but it's probably not gonna be a big deal, I'm just trying to think of the worst case.
Yeah, the, the geotechnical, uh, so like, again, the, the sidewalks, I'm not worried about it all. Um, you're not, you're, you just have foot traffic, so that's not gonna be impacted. Um, in certain areas, uh, for the roadway, since it's state roadway, they might require a geotech, but this was, that was not included as part of this proposal. Um, so we, you might have to do some geotechnical investigations, because the, um, the type of vehicle that are gonna be moving along that path are pretty heavy, so we don't want it to sag and things like that, so they will have to be, most likely this will have to be explored a little bit there. Uh, but, uh, we are also not, we're, uh, doing a new roadway, and so, um, you know, it, it might, it might not have to be expensive. We're just gonna be adding on to like, the side of it a bit.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be a, a, a unusually large number, because it's already there, but it is a widening, for sure.
That's. It is a widening, and so we're widening and then, you know, putting the new signal in, so just where the widening would happen, we might have to do some simple rings there, as part of this process.
I think that covers most of the things I was thinking about, I just, I know, I think you asked Debbie whether or not you need to include the, the, the intersection work, and if Indot's not gonna do it, we need to know what it's gonna look like, right?
Right.
Yeah, we, so, yeah, yes, so, uh, it will have to be part of the, the construction documentation, um, so it, somebody's gonna have to design it for, for what we receive today from Indot. So, we receive like, concept plans of what they would require for that intersection improvement, and so we can absolutely provide a scope for that and a fee for it.
Then does Indot have to approve that?
Uh, Indot have to approve.
Your, the, the plan, the engineering plan, they have to approve it, yes.
Yes, yeah, well, it's the engineering plans are, are designed, they will, we will be working with them to get all those things approved.
Okay.
Uh, we will, uh, there's a very s- uh, specialized, um, uh, trade or traffic signaling that we would have to add on for our services for the new signal as part of that. But just, just to be upfront, uh, we don't do that in-house, the signalization would, uh, need to be completed by a third party, which we, we've already contacted, we've done before. Uh, we, we do that with UPS a lot, things like, big, you know, big centralized intersections and improvements like that.
So, should that be included then in an updated, uh, proposal, is that the appropriate way to do that?
Yeah, I would need to update this proposal to include that additional work, right?
Yeah, but what do you, what's the town council think about that, I guess that's the way we've got.
I think we need to move forward with it.
Yeah.
We're gonna do it.
Yeah.
This is it.
Yep.
We're gonna try to do it.
Yeah, as long as, yeah, but we're not gonna know unless we have it, so Lilly has to have something to approve, so. I think this is.
I do have a question real quick about the Wheatley Group.
Yeah.
Um, so, this is partly curiosity and partly probably me being new to all this. Uh, but how many hours will be, be expecting them to work, and what does their work consist of?
So, um, that, that's a great question, so, uh, you would only be using them for as, as much as you would like to, so again, they're hourly rate, and what they would be doing is, uh, evaluating the project, and then they have several representatives that work at Indot specifically, and other, um, funding agencies to see where the opportunity is, so I think, you know, you're, you'd be on the hook for a, a few hours right up front, um, you know, probably less than a, a thousand, or maybe a thousand dollars, uh, just to, to do those investigations, based on those investigations, um, we'd give you the step two of, hey, we have found opportunities to provide you with grants on X, Y, and Z.
Okay.
And those grants will add up to this amount of money, and then that's where you can involve them further for, uh, helping you, uh, solicit and get those grants um, to help fund this project.
Okay.
And so, you know, the upfront cost is probably pretty minimal, um, but, and, you know, what happens is, once we find the opportunity for further funding, or match grants, or whatever, that's when you can continue to involve it, but at that point, that's when you know that there's a, a good opportunity to get some of those funds. Instead of being below the wild, because you're, you're exponentially, exponentially adding to the value that you already have.
Okay, yeah, I've just, I've never seen a hourly fee of ten thousand dollars, so, I was just curious about that.
So, that's hourly not, that's hourly not to exceed.
Okay, not to exceed, ten thousand, okay.
Yeah, that, that's your, that's your estimate of what their work would cost only an estimate.
Yeah, we just put a, a, a general fund in there, not to exceed, um, they, uh, that, you know, like I said, we would only, but their hourly rates, um, I, I don't have those in front of me, but, you know, typically they're a little over a hundred dollar an hour or something like that, and so they would build that hour by hour up to a max of ten thousand, unless you give them the go-ahead to move beyond that.
Okay.
But.
So, that's a hundred hours of work, give or take nine, you're a hundred hours.
Yes, exactly.
And I will say the Wheatley Group helped with our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, we worked with Jill.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're great to work with.
And the, and the college, the colleges worked with Wheatley.
Yeah.
That's how the town got your name, the college worked with Luckett and Farley and.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think I might have been just confused that it said billed hourly next to the ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Oh.
And everything else was a lump sum.
Yeah.
I was like, ten thousand dollars an hour, um, so that, that explains it a lot more.
I didn't do that much.
Yeah, we're gonna quit here.
I'm like, I need to be in that business.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
That's like, oh, geez, no, okay.
So, then the next step would be for you to come back with this, uh, addition, right?
Yeah.
So, this would be void what we've got.
Well, it, I don't know if it'd be void, it would just, we would have an addition to this.
Are you gonna redo the whole thing that you sent us and add that on?
Or is it gonna be?
Uh, I would, yeah, I would, um, just add to what you have permanently for, and then, uh, update the cost for them.
Okay.
And I'll put that as a separate line, I don't, that you see in the phase one, it'll be, um, state right away improvements, and then it'll have a separate B associated with it. So, you know exactly how much the, the engineering cost for that would be.
And then also the light, also, would the light be on there also?
Yeah, that, that's if, that includes all.
Okay, all of it, okay.
All the improvements of the state road, so.
Okay, perfect.
You know, all the roadwork, all the lights, all, and everything, um, is part of them.
Perfect.
So, okay.
Right.
He danced that part.
Um, so, but please, uh, uh, step one, do I, Chip, I need to provide you a broad, uh, cost, you know, I, I need, how do I need to do that to you?
Yeah.
Is that a certain way?
Yeah, I guess, I, I.
And then.
You know, I think an email's fine, let's not over interfere this, I just, I need to have a little, a little bird seed put into my letter and correspondence to Lilly to say, hey, this is something that's really important, you know, this is kind of sort of what it might look like, and we'd like to inform you about it if you have questions, we'd like your approval to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I'm, I'm probably gonna give you a range in this.
Yeah, that's not, that's a range, because I don't, I don't wanna say this is exactly gonna be this, I don't know about your, that's our accountability. No, but. I, I, I can, I can, uh, couch around, don't worry, I've done that a long time.
Okay, uh, so, I'll do that, and then, um, once I have that, then I can, I will update that. Do you prefer to have that before we move any further, so I feel like if you don't give it some.
No, no, let's, let's, I think we just, we run it parallel tracks, let's go ahead and get the, let's go get your proposal updated, please, and send that to you. I, I just, I feel certain that they're gonna say, we get it, this is important, keep moving ahead and let us know as you know more about what it's gonna look like. Because they'll, you know, they're gonna wanna be kept up to speed on something this big a change.
Yeah. Okay, Matt, so can I add some?
Unless, unless you all, unless the council feels differently, I'm sorry.
No, I, I agree, um, Matt, can I, can I add something else to your plate?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, we also have Lilly money for our park over here.
For your what?
For our park, the Hanover Park.
Other?
And, um, so we're kind of, we're, we're looking at different things, we're looking at possibly, um, maybe adding some land, because we are kind of landlocked right now, and we do have a, a gentleman in town that owns some land, and, you know, he's kind of talked about donating some land, but we'd have to put a road in and retention pond and all that, and we've had, you know, other people kind of reach out and say, hey, I've kind of got some property for sale, and you know, would you guys be interested, but we got some other things that we need to kind of address before the big things, so I didn't know if maybe you could come down one day and we could kind of look at, so we have a parking lot, we, like I say, we, we're landlocked, we don't have a whole lot of parking, we need to kind of redesign our parking lot. Um, we are, we purchased lights for our parking lot, and, uh, our people are putting that in, so that's gonna be part of this project also. And then, we have, um, we have a backside that, because we used to have a pool to this, and we had to close it, so the backside of our building, uh, where the locker rooms and stuff was, and the showers, and we need to kind of think about how to redesign that, because it's not being used. Um, and, and make it, you know, whether we use, do more restrooms, or I'm not really for sure, but that, you know, we'd kind of like to talk to you about that. Uh, we do need to remodel the restrooms that we have right now and make them more handicap accessible, uh, because they're, they're just really in bad shape. Um, so if you could shoot me some times that you might be able to run down and just do a walkthrough and.
And our, our big concern is the parking, we, we, our softball guy has brought in so many people, we, we don't have anywhere to put the cars, except in neighbors' yards, and they're complaining.
Yeah.
And we, and we've had Ben on the city council, they've gone, gone out and got some quotes about, um, changing some things in the parking lot to expand parking capacity, which would be great. And then, we were thinking, well, you know, maybe we oughta engage with somebody who does this for a living to look at that parking lot and say, oh, yeah, that's perfect, that's the right thing to do, or, hey, how about we get this way or that way, to pick up more spots, um.
To help us look at the big picture, right?
That's probably the most immediate need is.
Yeah, right, yeah.
How do we get more cars there, because it really gets tough.
Yeah.
It's a great, great problem to have.
That, that is certainly a good problem, these are parts of being used, right?
Yeah, they're just being loved at that.
Yeah.
That's awesome, they did, I, I did visit that with Ben, um, and he did show me around some of those spaces, not, not in detail of that, but I, uh, he, he showed me around really, um, to kind of point out, I think, the extra land, Ben, are you there?
No, he didn't make it.
Okay, uh.
I want to hear a bit of his line.
I, I can see someone off to the right with a hat, but I didn't see, could see the face.
It's Kobe.
Kobe.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so, uh, yeah, he did show me some of those thi- those things, and, yeah, I'd be happy to make it down, probably like, early next week, uh, most likely, if I said right.
Okay, yeah, just, just shoot me some times and a couple, we'll get a couple of us over here and.
Okay.
That would be, that would be wonderful, it's just, that park's being loved, it's a great thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We also have a, a little park in town called Fireman's Park, that we, you know, would like to maybe add some playground equipment to, and so we might, you know, shoot over there and let you look at that too.
Yeah, so, I saw that park as well, Ben, he showed me that one, he, he should.
Yeah.
My hand.
Um, yeah, I, I'd be, I, I'm familiar with that one, and saw it was built, so I'd be happy to, to do whatever you need, um, I'm, I'm here to help.
Okay. That'd be great.
All right, all right, well, thank you all so much, sorry I didn't do it in person up in, in the back of a car, we've got a family here on the baseball this week, uh, or today, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I, I'm just running behind time.
Thanks, Chip.
Where's Chip, it was, good talking to you, appreciate the help, uh, council members, is there any other questions you have for me?
All right.
I don't think so.
I don't, I don't think so, I think we're, I think we're headed in the right direction.
Cool.
Yeah, I will, I will get this worked up and, and send it over as soon as possible, I know you guys are kind of in an itch to get moving.
Yeah. Thanks, Matt.
Always, always wanted to do it.
Yeah.
So, it was a third.
That's great, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chip. Bye, Matt.
See y'all.
See ya.
Bye. Kobe, it's not time to kill the recording.
All right, I'm gonna go in ahead and adjourn the meeting, I'll need a motion.
So, I'm gonna.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, if they ever say hi, hi.
Hi.